Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, equal and free, in justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Calling to order the Borough of Saraville Planning Board meeting for May 17, 2023. Beth, has this meeting been advertised in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act?
Yes, Chairman, it has.
Beth, may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Allegra.
Here.
Mr. Blamar.
Yeah.
Mr. Bolton.
Here.
Mr. Buchanan. Councilman O'Noha. Ms. Palowski. Mr. Spazato. Chairman Muller.
Here.
Mr. Cornell.
Here.
Mr. Fowler.
Here.
Mr. Barlow. We have a quorum.
Thank you very much, Beth. Memorialization of resolutions.
This evening, we have two. First one is Saraville Seaport Association's Urban Renewal Preliminary and Final Major Site Plan.
Do we have a motion for approval? Second?
Roll call, Mr. Oh, hold on, I have to. Mr. Blamar. Mr. Bolton. Ms. Palowski. Chairman Muller.
Yes.
It's approved. The second one is the Saraville Seaport Association's Urban Renewal Amended Preliminary and Final Major Site Plan.
Do we have a motion to approve the resolution? I'll second that, Beth.
Okay.
Roll call.
Mr. Blamar. Mr. Bolton. Ms. Palowski.
Yes.
Chairman Muller.
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Acceptance of the minutes, the minutes from April 5, 2023. Is there a motion to accept the minutes? Bolton, is there a second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Minutes from April 19.
Do you have a motion to accept the minutes? I'll make the motion. Is there a second? Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post.
Beth, is there anything on the communication agenda tonight?
On this evening, Chairman.
Beth, is there any site plans or subdivision hearings?
On tonight, we do have a hearing regarding the Borough of Saraville, New Jersey, reexamination of master plan, report dated May 1, 2023, prepared by Higher, Grule and Associates.
We have Susan here, is that correct? Susan, would you please step up to the podium, please?
Mr. Chairman, before she proceeds, I just let the record reflect that the appropriate notices were sent out to the County Planning Board, State Divisional Planning, and all of the adjacent municipalities in keeping with the statute.
Thank you, Mr. Barlow. Hi, Susan. Welcome back. Before, at our last meeting, we discussed the draft, and there were some modifications. We have some folks here from, from the borough, we have some folks online, we'd like to, for you to explain the reexamination plan, so that everyone can have a general understanding of it.
Fine, that's great. Mr. Chairman, I think that I probably should be sworn in. Certainly, Susan Grule, G-R-U-E-L. It's 236 Broad Street, Red Bank, New Jersey. I do. And, and just for those of the members of the public that are not aware, we are the planning consultants to the borough, and we have also been retained by this board to prepare the reexamination report and subsequent planning documents. So, just for purposes of that, I am a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey, and a principal with Higher, Grule and Associates. I think that a draft of the reexamination report has been put on file, and I just kind of like to explain what a reexamination report is, how it relates to ordinances and other land use documents within the community. A reexamination report by statute has to be prepared once every 10 years, and it really is supposed to be the policy document, the land use policy planning document for the community, and it is supposed to look at what's happened since the last reexamination report was prepared and adopted, which was 2013. Within that document, you're supposed to look at, okay, what are the goals and objectives that were identified in the, in the adopted 2013 reexamination report? What has changed? Are those document, are those goals and objectives and issues still relevant? Have they, have they intensified? Have they been addressed in any way? And then look at what has occurred, not only on the municipal level in terms of other planning documents, but on the county level and the state level as to what has been, what legislation has been adopted, which may be relevant, for example, electric vehicle charging stations is one, but there are a number, and identify what those are. The, the, the other piece is, then, once that's determined, then it is, there's a section on specific changes recommended to the master plan and to development regulations, basically the ordinance, the land development ordinance, and whether a new plan or regulation should be prepared. There are other, there are two other sections, subsections of the reexamination report. One has to do with statutory redevelopment, whether there are any sections of the community that should be considered as redevelopment areas, or the redevelopment plans, if there are, that those should be considered to be amended, whatever. And then the last is this electric vehicle charging station, and, and how that works in terms of locations appropriate for those types of infrastructure, I guess. So, so that's the overall context. Now, what does a reexamination report do and what doesn't it do? Again, it's a policy document, and it is intended to identify issues that may be around that, that you identify. It's, it's intended to look at your goals and objectives, but it is not intended to get into the weeds, I'll say, from a land use perspective, as to very comprehensive and, and specific recommendations and details on the master plan elements, a land use plan. And although there are some recommendations as to zoning changes, it's not comprehensive, although there is a recommendation to do a comprehensive revision to the ordinance. So, the, so the next step is to prepare different elements of the master plan. Again, this highlights those overall policy goals, objectives, and what should be the next step. But again, even with the master plan elements, those are policy planning documents. Now, what happens with those? Those are great to have, those are the basis for planning, for, for looking comprehensively at what your community should be in the, what it has been and what it should be in the future. Ultimately, though, what happens is, the, and, well, let me just say, you're in charge of the policy documents, you're in charge of the reexamination report, that's why we're here, and the master plan elements. The governing body is in charge of implementing those recommendations through ordinances, and that's the legal basis to move forward. And then, of course, based upon that, then development comes in to this board, but you use the master plan and the ordinances as your basis for evaluating development applications when reviewed. So, that's kind of the approach. The ordinances are supposed to be substantially consistent with the master plan recommendations. Okay, substantially, and we could debate what substantial means, I'm sure Tom, you would say. We could debate that a lot, but we're not here to debate that. Okay? But that's the way, that's how everything kind of merges together. I would just note, in terms of this reexamination report, that there was also public outreach in terms of surveys that were part of this, and so there is a provision in here that talks about what the results of the surveys were. So, I'd just like to, I'm not going to go through all this, but what I would like to do is highlight, and I'll certainly answer any questions that anybody has, but I'd like to highlight the recommendations, Section D. And as I stated, master plan recommendations are one part, okay? It was, it's recommended that certain goals and objectives be added, particularly as it relates to resiliency and energy efficiency. This is page 33. Another master plan recommendation was updated land use plan element, that would be the basis for the zoning and for changes to the zoning map and the zoning ordinance. It was also recommended in here to prepare a circulation plan, because clearly traffic is an issue in the community. And the last under master plan is to prepare a community facilities plan, to make sure that that's all coordinated, firehouses, schools, community centers. In terms of land use and development regulations, adopt an updated zoning map, and again, we go to the fact that the land use plan element would kind of be the next step, but ultimately it would be this, the zoning ordinance map, comprehensive revision to the zoning ordinance, addressing the electric vehicle charging stations, and there were certain other recommendations in terms of signage, design standards, flood hazard overlays, sustainability and green building practice, and then there were a couple of specific recommendations in terms of rezoning certain areas. So, that's the highlight, those are the main recommendations. Again, I don't want to bore everybody with the entire document, but that gives you an overview, and I'm happy to answer any questions that the board has or the public has as it relates to this draft.
Thank you, Susan.
Sure.
I just note, for the record, I think your firm's been before us three or four times on this. We've, we met with your firm at the inception to go over an outline, and then we had the draft, and we're, we're back now. We've heard from numerous members of the public, you've heard numerous perspectives from the members of the board, we've had the questionnaire, so I don't think there's anything more that we could do to try to get the opinions and feelings of the citizens of the borough, and I believe you've addressed all of them in the, in the, in the report, which was very, very detailed and very comprehensive, and it took into account all of the issues that were identified, and we're appreciative of that. Does any members of the, any members of the board have any questions for Susan regarding the reexamination?
Hi, thank you for the, the intro, I think that was really, really helpful. I know you didn't want to read through the entire document in just scanning. What is nice to see is that Saraville residents communicated that environmental quality and protection were very important to them, and that bicycle and pedestrian safety was very important to them. I do see, per our reexamination conversation at a prior meeting, that Saraville's goals and objectives now will include in the master plan to encourage resiliency, energy efficiency, and sustainability in all development within the borough. I want to make sure residents know that the contributions that they make in those surveys are invaluable, and participation is of paramount importance. The proof is in this, right? So, because people contributed those opinions, we will now continue to encourage flood resilient building construction in the floodplain, encourage green and blue roofs in all public building retrofits and new construction, develop energy efficiency requirements for new construction, and pursue the electrification of the borough's fleet of vehicles. That is amazing, so I'm glad that that is worded just the way that it is.
Thank you.
I think it's worth saying, I said on our environmental commission, so it's important that we, we know that Saraville residents can contribute and have their voices heard.
Thank you, Mr. Spazato. Anybody else from the board have any questions, comments regarding the master plan reexamination? No? Open to the public? Is there a motion to open to the public on this issue?
All in favor?
Aye.
Post.
Any members of the public like to be heard on the master plan reexamination?
Good evening, could you remind your name, remind me of your name again?
Susan Grule.
Susan Grule.
Tommy Susan.
Okay, hi Susan, I'm Alexa.
Please state your address for the record.
Tangletown. 47 East Cup Street.
Thank you.
State your name.
So Alexandria, you can just write Alexa, Harris with one R, H-A-R-I-S. Hi. I thank you for posting the flyer on the website. Mr. Muller, the chairman, I do agree that some outreach has been done, but I unfortunately disagree that outreach could always be improved and always be done more. I didn't receive an email about tonight's email, only found it on the calendar, so I was just, want to point out that that was an opportunity to, to notify everyone who filled out the survey, that there is a meeting, there's also, you know, planning boards hold sessions at public community spaces, like at the library, the senior center, but we are here now, and so I just wanted to ask, just wanted to clarify, these are like all policies that are within New Jersey. I didn't see anything about Vision Zero or Complete Streets. I'm aware that there's like over 140 something municipalities in New Jersey that have signed on and adopted this policy with Complete Streets and Vision Zero, and with so much of the public in support of bicycle lanes and infrastructure and safety, I think that's something to also consider. If no one is, or someone is not aware what they mean, Complete Streets just means adopting a policy that like multiple forms of transportation are available for all ages and abilities. So, you know, biking would be great, I'm a huge advocate for that. I also wanted to urge for mixed zoning, I know, looking at the statistics, some folks have mentioned that mixed zoning, or mixed use, which is dependent on mixed zoning, is something that they find really important, so I just wanted to urge the planning board to communicate with the zoning board that mixed use is really, really integral part for us to make really conscious and environmental focused planning when we talk about development or really redevelopment, because we're, we're already pretty much built out, so is the rest of the state, would love to see that. The circulation plan, I hope that really includes public transit, the coach bus to New York City was cut down, I rely on public transit, you see my groceries with me, I would love to see something that's local, I would love to see the 815 to not just come by once an hour, sometimes it comes every two hours because a bus is canceled and a substitute bus isn't sent out, so I just wanted to clarify, like, does this circulation plan, does this also encourage public transit, or is this, just on page 33, number three, is that the extent of it when it comes to circulation plan? Is this, is this it that I'm seeing? Yeah.
Oh, thanks, Beth. No, the circulation plan is intended to include everything, and when you say complete streets, that is really one of the core principles of what a circulation plan would be. It would include this traditional vehicular intersection improvements, but it would also include bikes, pedestrians, and public transit, because that is a key element to this, and where you are here in Saraville, it really is very important, so it would include all that.
Yeah, it's really hard to get around even just across town, with every year, I remember in high school, the public bus, the, the school buses would be cut down, and so one year I had, I had the bus, and one year I didn't, and so, you know, that, that's something that's a struggle, so it would be, it would be great to see more public transportation. This is something I brought above to the county commissioners, and unfortunately, they're still not bringing back some of the shuttle lines, it, it's just, you know, it's really expensive to just live, and it is really expensive and accessible to live in Saraville, so that's an issue I wanted to bring up. With the electric vehicle, what was it, charging stations, there is a NJTPA grant that was extended from May 30th to like early June for electric vehicle charging stations, that's the first round that they're going to be going through, so that's something to consider, but electric vehicles, that's still a lot of traffic, even if we replaced every single gas, gasoline dependent vehicle in Saraville and neighboring towns, you know, because some people work from out of town and come in and everything like that, but just wanted to bring that above. And then the rent is like minimum of like $1,000, and like, I'm just thinking, I can't afford that, I can't live, I can't move out of my mom's house, I can't afford that, rent's supposed to be like 25 to like 30% of my income, and yeah, I'm definitely not earning $4,000 a month, but winding woods for one apartment is 1,400 something dollars, and I really appreciate the, the rent control that's only been put in this year, but it would be great to also see very low income and affordable housing, and not just the 20% minimum, to be strongly urging, or, you know, for at least 50, right? Or just not, not go into these agreements with developers, because, I mean, who is it really serving? Oh, that's so, yeah. And then I just, I think I had one more question for Ms. Susan. No, I don't have any really questions, but they're just really comments, and I really strongly urge for accessibility and public transit to be on like a high priority list and redevelopment, like mixed use, like taking a, waiting for a bus to go to ShopRite, or waiting for a bus to go to Walmart in East Brunswick, because I can't get to the Walmart in Old Bridge, like, it's, it's really frustrating, and most, many of these stops don't have bus shelters. So, yeah, thank you.
Alexa, thank you very much for your, your views and comments. Is there anyone else from the public physically present that wants to, has any questions or comments regarding the master plan reexamination? Is there anyone online?
Yep.
Go ahead, Donna. Donna, please state your name and address.
Donna Roberts, 369 Washington Road, can you hear me?
Donna, can you do that again?
Donna Roberts, 369 Washington Road, can you hear that?
Yeah, we could hear that now, thank you.
Okay. Hi, I just did want to say, this topic came up yesterday during legislators' Back to School Day, I visited the high school, and the high school students really are aware of what's going on, and their concerns kind of mirror what our concerns are, overdevelopment, too much traffic, difficult to get around, too much building, and I did want a little bit of information about the next steps from my point of view as a council member. Susan, you had stated that the council does create the ordinances based on the master plan, and your wording was ordinances should substantially be consistent with the plan, so I think that's where we're going to have some discussion about how substantially we need to be consistent with some of the recommendations that are in here. Is that accurate?
Yes, but I would say that there'll be even more of a deep dive, I guess I would say, in the land use plan element, which would be the next step, and, and that is part of the master plan, again, that's the policy, that continues to be the policy planning document, that'll have a little bit more substance about land use and zoning than the reexamination report has. The reexamination reports sets it up, tees it up, for the details of the land use plan element for the zoning, circulation plan for circulation, obviously, and all components of that. So, once the land use plan element is complete, and again, this is the board, the planning board is in charge of that, and they'll have to go through a public hearing and do the same type of outreach, then that would be the basis for making the zoning changes that would be substantially consistent, and you're right, there is, there's definitely a qualitative consideration as to what substantially consistent is.
And, and just, since I was not part of the council or any of the boards 10 years ago when this previously occurred, I'm just, have a couple of other questions about the next step. So, you had mentioned land use planning is the next step handled by the planning board, and I think another of the larger steps would be that rezoning map, and how is that typically handled? Maybe Jay would be the person to ask for that, or Susan?
No, I can, I can respond to that, I think Jay and I are on the same page on it, but I can certainly respond. Generally speaking, there is a proposed, what you could either call it a land use map, or a zoning, proposed zoning map, that would be a component of the land use plan element. So, then that is really what is the core for the zoning map, that would be used as the basis for the zoning map that would be adopted by the governing body by ordinance, and that would be the basis for the standards for the different zones, whatever they may be. So, that's how that generally works. And so, you would know by the draft or proposed zoning map, land use plan map, what the zoning would ultimately look like.
And, and so, since there are a number of action items actually coming out of this plan, what type of timeframe do we have from adoption of a master plan to actually have some of these ordinances show up at the council?
Well, that's, the sooner the better, but because obviously, as you know, things evolve, and then, who knows, things change, but, but there is no time limit as to when and how you do that. I think what, what is being recommended is, as a result of cobbling together a lot for all these years, your zoning ordinance, I'll say zoning ordinance, land development ordinance, that it really needs a cleanup, because there are certain inconsistencies between the different pieces to it, and so it really needs that cleanup, not only based upon what the recommendations come out of this and the land use plan element, but generally speaking, what your ordinance is now. I know that there are inconsistencies, and I think Jay would reinforce that.
Actually, the master plan that was done 10 years ago, the ordinances were never updated to match that master plan, so you're dealing with ordinances that actually were in existence before your last master plan, so the intention now is to get the reexam finalized, and then get the ordinances in place to be consistent with this new updated reexamination report.
Yeah, and that's what I was looking at, that looks like it's going to be a bit of a heavy lift, so it might take... take some time before it comes to the council for final approvals. Does that sound accurate?
It, it could, um, it could. It, it really, I don't know what the timeframe would really be. It depends on how much discussion there is about the different pieces.
I, I think in this case, I think Susan's office was actually authorized to not only do the reexamination report, but do certain pieces of the next step.
Yes.
Already in those.
Yes, and that is true. And Amanda is here to help with that.
Susan, just so we're clear, the, the master plan, um, the council could accept it, um, doesn't, it's not bound by the master plan. We can't bind the council and force the council to enact ordinances that are.
Yeah, go ahead. The last statement was, is correct. The planning board adopts the master plan. The master plan, if this board adopts it, this is the master plan. The council doesn't do anything with regards to the master plan. The, the steps to adopt ordinances that are consistent with it is solely up to the borough council. And they can choose to follow it, they can choose to change it. They could choose to, I guess evidently what happened 10 years ago is not change it. Because it is, it is a heavy lift as was indicated and it, it is a financial part of it. And if the borough has already committed and hired the appropriate planner to do it, obviously, well, this is the first domino, so to speak. If it tips over, then there's other dominos that flow from it.
I'm trying to get my head around the process so that when it does come to council, I'm prepared for it and that I'm informed to make better, um, choices and decisions based on the master plan and all the work put in.
Yes, and that is, um, that's great because many people on, that are governing body members are not part of the process, don't understand it and it's difficult. It's, it's a difficult process to really get a hold of with everything that the governing body deals with, which is more than just zoning as such. So, um, great. So I'm glad that you're asking these questions and, um, that's great.
Yeah, I, I think it's important that the process be explained maybe better than it's been over the past 10 years. So it's, it's good that we're having this discussion. So everyone understands what's going to happen. And their expectations are met by that. Anthony, did you have a question?
I did, yeah. Um, I think the councilwoman has some, some good questions, um, in an attempt to really make sure that we're all making educated decisions. And I'm grateful that the councilwoman is able to participate through our hybrid model here. This is nice. My question is, how can we, are there ways in which we can avoid sending a master plan to borough council and having no ordinance as adopted resulting from the work that we did, which sounds like was the case 10 years ago? Is there, is there a way that those two bodies can collaborate and iron out details or? Help me understand that portion.
That's a, that's a really good question. Uh, we've seen where there is a subcommittee formed with members of the governing body and the planning board. So there's coordination with that. Um, now, of course, the way that the ordinance is related to the master plan, which I've explained, but when a draft of an ordinance is introduced, say, let's call it the zoning ordinance, is introduced at the governing body level, it must come back to this board as a referral. And the board can do other things, but the one thing that the board has to do is to determine whether it is substantially consistent with the master plan. Now, if it's not, there's, there's a mechanism in which the governing body can still adopt it. There's definite governing body opportunities there as well. But, um, but there is this interconnection. But we've seen where there may be a subcommittee. That's one way. Clearly.
I understand the councilwoman's concerns about some of this being big stuff to take on. But I think there's also a lot of very manageable, adoptable portions of this upon which we can all build together. So I'm eager to, to get this going.
Donna, is there any other comments or questions that you had?
No, I'm just going to, um, keep on attending, so I'm, I'm aware. And as I have questions, I, I know that you're all there willing and, um, able to take them on. And Susan, I thank you for your time.
Oh, certainly. Any questions you may have, please feel free to contact us too.
Anyone else?
And, and if I could just make one last comment. I know the, um, Alexa had mentioned the outreach. Only 391 people actually responded and that, that is quite disappointing. Um, but I think they did echo the, what the majority of people tell me on a regular basis. So at least that, I think that rings true. Um, I think we, we can probably do better with our communications. I just don't know how. Hopefully our new website will help make it easier for people to interact with us and, and share their valuable opinions.
Alexa, uh, did you want to say something else?
I actually did have questions, um, that I forgot about on page 35 and then.
How do we let us go?
Oh, just if there's anyone else.
He had a chance to speak.
Okay.
Anybody else online, um, press star nine or raise your hand, please, would like to speak? Go ahead, Donna.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was trying to lower my hand.
Oh, okay. No further.
Alexa, you want to step back up to the podium?
Yes, please. Thank you, um, for allowing me to speak. Um, the outreach recommendations, I did email some to council president Anahu and Anthony about outreach in general with the survey and then also just general for the planning board. Um, I can forward them to, to the chairman and the other members of the planning board moving forward. Um, but again, folks who, who completed the survey weren't emailed about tonight's meeting, but overall dismal, um, uh, response to the survey, but that's okay. We're here now, page 35. Could you, uh, Ms. Susan, could you explain what B2 zone is and B3 zone is? And then I also want clarification for item number nine as well. Page 35. Items number eight and nine for anyone who wants to keep, uh, keep on track. If you could explain what they are and like the differences, if that's not explained enough, yeah.
Oh, wait a minute. You can have this.
Cool.
I'm gonna have this.
Hey.
And there we can stand next to each other and have this conversation. Um, B2 and B3 zones are, um, commercial districts that, uh, there's a hierarchy, starting with neighborhood commercial all the way to highway commercial. And so there is this very small, um, area that is zone B2 along Borden Town Avenue. And it just seems like it's kind of lost in the, there's a better way of zoning those properties. And so it was suggested that they be placed into the B3 zone and the B2 zone be eliminated. Now, there may be through the land use plan element, recommendations coming out of changes to the B1 and the B3 so that they're not called B1, B3, they may be. Um, and the standards may be looked at and modified accordingly. Okay, so, so that's what that is. Um, eliminate the PO zone and the SED2 zone. As we talked about, there are, the ordinance is old and the ordinance has inconsistencies in it that haven't been brought up to date um, based upon actions that have occurred over the past years. And in this instance, that's exactly what has happened. There is no longer a PO zone. It's already part of the B4. And the SED2 zone now is a redevelopment area. So there's no need to have an SED2 zone. You have the, I'll say the zoning handled through the redevelopment plan, uh, Fulton's Landing. So those zones are really redundant, inconsistent, confusing.
Could you, could you, um, explain what B4 exactly? I know you said that's a type of commercial district, but what exactly is that? Is that on the highway? Is that?
Yes, I remember that is the highway. Jay probably can answer that more.
B4 may be more water related, might be closer to the water. B3 is your highway business zone. I think B4 may be.
B3 is what again?
Highway, highway business.
And then the, the C, this SED2 zone is a redevelopment area.
Now.
Now, where exactly is that?
Fulton's Landing.
Main Street Development, across from the Main Street Townhouse Complex.
Oh, all right. Wait, is that closer like towards the, uh, police department?
Between White Oaks Drive and Crossman Road on the right side as you're driving toward the police station.
I don't drive.
As you're taking a bus along Main Street.
Bus, uh, bus only goes Washington Road.
It's along Main Street. If you're heading on Main Street toward the police station on the right side, once you get past White Oaks, before you get to Crossman.
All right, I'll try to look this up.
And, and actually, one of the things, just to clarify, that with the zoning map, those, the zones would be clearly laid out, not only the zoning, but the redevelopment areas would be very clearly laid out. It's required to be specifically identified on the zoning map. So that would show up. Fulton's Landing would show up on the zone, on the zoning map.
Okay. I just want to clarify, make sure. That was it. Thank you for clarifying. Thank you.
You're welcome, Alexa. Is there anyone else who wants to be heard? Seeing no one, is there a motion to close the public portion? Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the master plan reexamination report dated May 1, 2023, prepared by Higher, Grul and Associates. Is there a motion? Second? Roll call vote?
Mr. Allegra?
Yes.
Mr. Blamar? Mr. Bolton?
Yes.
Ms. Palowski?
Yes.
Mr. Spazato? Chairman Mueller?
Yes.
Approved.
Thank you for your work, Susan, and I know the work continues and we look forward to it, to. Yes, thank you very much. It's very important. Everyone understands and we, we understand that this is the objectives, high level objectives. And now we'll start implementing those and start focusing in on those in, in the work that you're going to do. Yep, thank you. Any old business, new business, administrative matters?
Yes, our next meeting is June 7th, 2023.
Okay, is there a, a motion to open up the meeting for the public portion? Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
Okay, anyone from the public who would like to come up and address or questions, comments?
Anybody from online that would like to speak?
We have some.
All good. Thank you, um, Alexa. Do I need to repeat my address again?
Okay.
Great, um, since there was a, a comment about outreach and how to improve it, um, I just wanted to reiterate and bring up some ideas and hopefully we could see some of them come to fruition um, as a member of a public. And, you know, I, I can't be at all the meetings as much as I would like to. So it'd be great to, um, make it as accessible as possible. Um, just a thought, like, um, Ms. Donna Roberts, or Councilwoman Roberts brought up that she spoke to a lot of high school students. Um, as a high school student, I always remember I couldn't get around town and didn't feel like there was any way for me to get my voice heard. It would be really great if like in the future, there's some kind of survey or outreach where you could send it out to all the homeroom teachers and it can be done in the first like 10, 15 minutes of class. And, uh, there's a lot of high school students who want to hear their voices heard. I know I wanted mine heard and, um, I heard, I don't know anybody from my graduating class who still lives in Saraville. I, I don't know that many. And so it just speaks to how much is the, is the development and the layout of this town and the facilities and everything? How much does it serve people? You know, um, just wanted to bring that up. If you want, you can do a youth group, um, you know, planning board, talk about land use and urban planning. And urban planning is a huge hot topic. A lot of people are interested in that, especially when it comes to sustainability and, and community outreach. Um, some of the suggestions that I emailed in Mar- uh, in March, um, was, uh, posting the board's or the secretary email on the page on the website. The website looks so fantastic, I'm so glad to see it revamped. But I do, I think it would be really great if it was accessible, if you need yourselves available for public to reach out to you when they're not available to come and attend these meetings, whether it's in person or online. Um, for any outreach in particular, we have a lot of Spanish speaking people. Um, so it would be great if the flyers were also available in Spanish translation. There are also a lot of other language speaking people. There's Polish. I grew up speaking Russian, had to translate all the documents, including legal documents to my parents, um, and to my mom. So it, it, that would really help, um, as well. Um, also maybe even canvassing, you know, just friendly neighbors coming out, that'd be really great. Um, you know, um, I don't recall seeing this on the Saraville Bombers thing, which I know is separate and that's a separate entity, but it would be great if there was direct communication. Um, you know, also putting the flyers at community centers, like the churches, the mosque, the Dorkadish Temple as well. The ShopRite, putting a huge flyer, the library poster, huge poster, like, I, I know other municipalities do that. Like talk with the urban planner or talk with the engineer, talk with the planning board member. Like having these sessions and, and, you know, proactively hosting these opportunities, you know, instead of saying, sitting here and waiting, no one's reaching out to us. But it's really hard to reach out. Everyone has a very short, limited time span. Some of us don't want to be here, um, in this meeting maybe and anyway, um, but, um, and some may just not have the attention to hear what people have to say. So I, that's just some, I have a lot, but that's just a little bit, you know, the outreach has to be active. Um, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Alexa. Thank you for those comments. Okay.
Um, can you guys hear me again?
Go ahead, Donna.
I, I just wanted to, um, respond about some of the outreach and outreach has been a challenge. Uh, that is why I did attend the high school legislative back to school day. We do, um, at the, at the council, we are working with the school system. We brought in interns for the first time. We are building a relationship so that we can have more open communication with them. Uh, there's a lot of logistical issues. We do, um, a lot of publications and we will probably have to talk at a council level about a communications budget because I think that's one of the big things we have to overcome. Um, my little Facebook page did not get to very many people either. So I know it's a challenge and we will be working on it. And, um, if the planning board is interested in becoming part of the internship program, we were only doing it with council at this point, but, um, we're looking to open it up. Maybe preparation has some students in it and find new ways to communicate with the public. So I know that's important. I just want to, um, follow up with Alexa about what we have been doing and, um, really working hard to do some more outreach. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Online? Hey, I don't see anyone else in chambers, so is there a motion to close the public portion? Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
There, motion to adjourn? Yep, sure.
In terms of communication, I'm, I'm sure there are smaller tangible steps that we might be able to take that would be, you know, relatively easy. Um, I know there are rules and regulations regarding establishing a, the social media page or account.
Do you already have a social media account?
Yep.
Yes, who, and there's somebody who handles that?
Okay.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Yeah. For the town? Yeah.
I mean, the outreach regarding the schools, to me, take a lesson from Call the Schools. That was probably one of the most biggest outreach programs that the school did. And anyone can, I think, publish through the Bomber Blast, and it gets to everyone in the schools. And I don't know if, you know, if that's been looked at, that if you want to get any type of message across to the schools as you go and ask Dr. Labby to publish it in the Bomber Blast, and it goes out to everyone's emails. As you saw with Cool in the School, you got one like every other day. So other than that, we have the website. We saw it, I saw it on Facebook. It seemed like there was a pretty good outreach effort. Yes, for the survey.
I mean, we put it in all the municipality buildings. It was through the, I believe, the email blast through the town and...
Yeah, and then it was also separate emails to residents, I remember, because I got them to two different email accounts, so.
I was on Channel 15 as well.
It was, okay. But definitely through, if you want to hit the schools, you know, you go to the Bomber Blast, and I think Dr. Labby will let you, as long as it's, you know, rational, let you send it for any. I see fundraisers for a whole bunch of things that aren't really school-connected, but they send them out.
Maybe it's worth our time to look into Generation of a One Cheater to submit that would list our, you know, potential planning board dates for a year or a rough overview of what it is that we do. So if residents at that level are interested in joining us, they're invited to come out and participate.
You want to send something? We can circulate it to the board, and then we can, you know, approve it. Want to send it through a Bomber Blast? That's...
I understand your commitment to communication and transparency at this level, so whatever we can do to support that is...
Yes, absolutely. You know, try to get more of the community involved, you know. Albeit, I think high schoolers might have a little different perspective than the folks that are at that point, but it's never too early to get them involved and to see what it's like, so.
Maybe I could chime in here if possible as well?
Sure. Thank Councilman?
Yes, yes, it is.
Oh, hi. Welcome.
You know, on the topic of communications, I think, you know, compared to probably 10 years ago and maybe even 20, you know, we may not be too pleased with the numbers that we got back on the surveys, but I don't think we should be too hard on ourselves necessarily. I think that it's a stepping point to see where we are and then create the initiatives and the ideas to see how we can outbuild upon it. And I think the idea is brought up to incorporate the high schoolers and maybe even younger is a great idea, not just because of their minds and the ideas from their practical experiences, but also their ability to get the word out, you know, whether it's back into their own homes, where maybe mom and dad or even grandparents may live, or just other folks within the communities through their jobs and other areas of hangout and socializing. So I think there's a lot of benefits in the idea that I came across to incorporate high schoolers and maybe even as far as reaching out to their, you know, homeroom teachers and whatnot. I think a lot of brilliant ideas we heard. And I guess on that, you know, more the question is, now that we're seeing the review of this master plan develop more and hearing the comments and feedback before it's eventually approved, and from my understanding, it now goes to the council for review and approval. I wanted to confirm if you feel like the revisions so far, does it consider enough of the public's input so far? Especially some of the comments on like, you know, the urban planning principles and, you know, the certain, you know, pedestrian-friendly designs or just, you know, transit-oriented development, I guess I'd put it, right? Do we feel like we're, you know, our reviews and changes are comfortable enough and consistent enough with the public's input so far? And I just want to get our take as a planning board first, before we see what the council thinks in due time.
Councilman, it's Barry Muller. I don't think the council votes on the master plan. Is that true, Tom, or...
And counsel, when the master plan was adopted, that's... It's now part of the municipal land use for Saraville. Then the next step will be the land use plan, and those items that will require the council's review, input, and, you know, kind of them taking the lead on those types of items, so.
Sorry, sorry. Regarding land use and more on the questions of the zonings and, you know, again, how the council will eventually review would still be based on some of the comments from the planning board, I would hope and presume, so that's not master. Land use more specifically and hearing the comments from more of the public. So I just wanted to make sure I, you know, I understood the general pulse of what our response was to the feedback that we're receiving so far.
Yeah, Councilman, it's Barry Muller again. You know, I think that the master plan reexamination accounted for all of those concerns that we heard through the survey and expressed during the meetings. They're high-level objectives. Now, the planner has to go back and do the, what is it, the land use?
The land use map? The zoning map?
The zoning map. They'll come up with proposed zoning ordinance. That will then have to be presented to the council for approval, and that would be the opportunity for those members of the council to approve the ordinance as being substantially in compliance with these, with the master plan. So I think your concern that, I think, the master plan is high-level, and we're going to start drilling down now in what the planner's doing and doing the local land use evaluation, drafting the ordinances. Those will drill down to the specific issues to accomplish those objectives. And then you and the other members of the council will have the opportunity to pass those ordinances to, you know, see that through. So I think your concerns are being met right now with the master plan reexamination, and we will get further detail as the planner proceeds forward in the process. And we'll have more opportunities to discuss specific ways to implement those goals in the master plan.
Okay. And I definitely appreciate that, Mr. Chairman. You know, I would say that some of the feedback as well, more specifically, I guess, into like some of the zoning questions, I think more recently in this meeting, too, even considering, let's say, like the relationship between like the B2 and the B3 and the B4 zoning, for example, right? I think it kind of stems back into certain questions or concerns, even from residents regarding if this will incorporate more like walkable, you know, friendly creations. And I feel like there's like a hint of, or like a lack of confidence if that will be incorporated in more of the B4 zonings in the future when we approve those for businesses and, you know, or applicants. And if that will also be more incorporated within B3 zonings as it was initially presumed to be compared into B2 zonings, right? So if, from my knowledge, B2 is kind of being weeded out, I think there's some concerns if, you know, the walkable, you know, designated areas and things like that will be still a priority for, within the B3 and B4, you know, context. So I think I wanted to kind of confirm that as well. And not just for myself, but really more on behalf of the residents that seem to be more concerned in that area, especially the younger populations as well.
Councilman, it's Barry Muller, and I understand where you're coming from. There's a lot of things that we're doing here that are aspirational. For instance, if we say we want to have more sidewalks, we want to have more bike lanes, et cetera, that goes to the council. All of that has a cost, and there might not be enough money in the budget to accomplish everything that we want to do. So a lot of this is aspirational, and a lot of it's going to depend upon how much money the council is going to be willing to commit to make these changes. And we don't, we don't have the power of the purse, so to say, the planning board. That's with the governing body. So I hear you. It's great to have all of these objectives and goals on paper and come up with potential ways to accomplish them, but if you don't have the money and backing of the council, it's not going to get done.
Yep, yep. That's, and you're absolutely correct. You know, these are definitely challenges that we face, you know, within our borough and really beyond from an infrastructure standpoint and, you know, the cost of it. So it's something that, you know, we'll be working as hard as possible to see how we can improve on this so that we can achieve these aspirations that we have so far. But I appreciate you, you know, stating these positions publicly, you know. Again, not just for myself, but also for those listening and for those who are listening in due time as well. Thank you.
No problem, Councilman. We're trying to address everything and want everyone to understand that really without the ordinance and the dollars being committed by the council, you know, there's not a lot of teeth to what we do, and people have to understand that.
I think Susan's point about the establishment of a subcommittee is a pretty salient one. I think that there is opportunity there to work together to figure out what the budget will allow and how we can be helpful in, you know, making sure that all of the aspirations that are attainable are attained.
I guess we'd have to recommend or make a, not an application, but make a recommendation to the council if, to the extent we can, which I don't know if we can, Tom, right?
No, I mean, I think you would ask the council rep that this is what the planning board would like to do. We'd be interested in a small subcommittee. At the end of the day, it's up to them whether or not they, you know, they have subcommittees for library and environmental and all these other, you know, just another one that may make sense because of where you are in the process of, you know, trying to get a jump on things, not trying to deal with it three years down the road. We weren't asked, so.
Is it something we would do now, or would we wait to the local land use? This gets fleshed out more with Susan.
What I find is anything with government, the sooner you start it, the more likely you are to get it. So worst case, you get the committee together and they wait a few months to meet as opposed to waiting four months and then proposing the idea. Start dialogue now, I guess, because if the mayor and council don't want to do it, it won't happen, so.
Ask about the governance of that subcommittee. Is that subject to sunshine law? Does that need to be done in public and noticed? Or is a subcommittee a smaller working group that doesn't, isn't bound by those requirements?
Small working group. You don't have a quorum on either, so there's no, and there's no action being taken. So I guess what I would envision, you might have one council person and one or two members of the planning board, just so that both sides kind of know what the others think. And certainly then coming back to their respective boards and reporting on it, and that's how it kind of gets disseminated.
That's a subcommittee that would be formed by the council?
Again, this, you're really talking about something, I think, a little bit more informal. But again, if the mayor and council or the administration don't want to do it, you can't make them or force them, but it seems this board is in favor of it or likes the idea. So someone can just, you could reach out as the chairman and just say, we had this idea. Susan's in favor of it and kind of open the lines of dialogue and see what's the best way of kind of putting that together, like a small working group. Just, these are what the planning board thinks are important issues or concerns as we go forward, or what we've heard through development applications, what people are concerned about, to make sure that Susan's task going forward is tailored to those concerns.
Okay. We wouldn't need, would we need to vote on that at this point, or we can just...
No, because it's... Yeah.
I would say, I'm hoping you can all hear me here. I would say that it would make sense if the mayor does go out and, you know, appoint or assuming it's possible now to, you know, to create, you know, that coalition of councils to review. Or she can just go ahead and trust kind of, I guess, the three, you know, liaisons for the planning board to kind of handle those tasks. I think those would probably be the two options available right now.
We do have two council members, I think, on the line who regularly attend the meetings, so it, you know, probably makes the most sense for you and Councilman Roberts to be part of the subcommittee along with some folks on the planning board, so.
And talk to Susan and see how she thinks.
Okay.
From her past experience, she may say, this is what I found keeps the dialogue working best.
Okay.
Right.
We'll circle back with the planner, Councilman, and we'll get some ideas, and I'll circulate them for the next meeting.
Fantastic. Thank you for all you do.
Okay. Any...
Move to adjourn?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, everybody.